Good evening. This is the November 28th, 2017 Rolling Meadows City Council Meeting. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Budmats.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Veenbosch.
Seven present, none absent. We do have a quorum. Next order of business, first order of business is... The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the November 14, 2017 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Budmats has approved it, has been seconded. It has been seconded. Are there any questions, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, is the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. The next... Next order of business is the swearing in of K-9 Officer Scar. Is there a motion to deviate from the agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Majikis has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is the question is, shall the council deviate from the agenda to swear in K-9 Officer Scar? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and we will now deviate from the agenda.
Scar's posse's gonna answer.
Well, I gotta tell you, Chief, when I got elected, they didn't tell me about this. This is something new and different, so... Are we ready? We are.
We'll bring Officer Chris Don, who's the handler, and his new K-9 partner, which is Scar. It's our youngest member of the police department. For those that don't know, Scar is a two-year-old mixed Belgian Melonwa and German Shepherd. I believe they call him the Dutch Shepherd. Is that correct, Officer Don, or?
Dutch German Shepherd.
German Shepherd, okay.
Officer Don, you are trolling. Tell me where you're...
Yeah.
Hi, Scar. It's nice to see you tonight. Welcome. Okay, Scar. I, Scar, having been appointed to the officer of K-9, police officer in the city of Rolling Meadows Police Department, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a Rolling Meadows K-9 officer and I hereby dedicate myself to protecting the rights, lives, and property of all the persons whom I serve. I pledge to provide equal protection under the law to all persons, to adhere to the law enforcement code of ethics, and direct my daily efforts towards achieving the mission, value, goals, and objectives of the Rolling Meadows Police Department to the best of my ability. Congratulations. You are now part of the Rolling Meadows Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Little noisy here, but I just want to thank all the police departments for coming out here. Up Grove Village, Arlington Heights, Palatine, Des Plaines. We are really one big team here and, like I said, serving the community, making our communities safe. The K-9 officers and their partners do train a couple kinds of month together, so it might not seem like it, but they are used to being together, so it's nice that I thank them all for coming out here. And I also thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to add Scar to our department. Really raises the level of service that we can provide to the residents of Rolling Meadows, so thank you.
Chief, do you need a moment for a picture? Thank you.
Thank you, officers. Thanks for coming over. Thank you. Thanks much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
No time to get smart ass. Those guys are...
Hi, Scar. Welcome. Thank you.
Now that we're back to normal, under the mayor's report, there's only a couple of things. I hope to see you all making plans to, you know, come to the tree lighting next week. I know it's ahead of time, but I just want to make sure that everyone is there and we will be out there serving a good old-fashioned spaghetti dinner for those that do come, so... Also, do any ward reports, please? Seeing none, this comes to the part of the meeting who is open to the public for 20 minutes. The council meeting is now open to the meeting, to members of the audience, for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Paul Ziegler from 2765 Algonquin Road. Please, please come to...
That's the subject.
Okay.
Do I get sworn in here?
No, you're good. If you were planning a zoning, we'd swear in, but here we don't have to. Go ahead.
All right. This is in regards to 2765, which is now going to be a car wash. I own the property next door, 2775, and unfortunately, I didn't know about this until a month ago when I met the chamber lady, Linda Ballatine in the jewel. So I learned about it just a month ago. There was another, I guess you'd call it Planning Commission meeting, on the 10th, I think it was, and there was some discussion and it was approved again. Unfortunately, at that meeting, I did not have the ability to hear the construction materials used, to deaden the sound, and to make it a somewhat unoffensive neighbor. So to take the initiative, I reached out to Martha and Fred and we basically thought we maybe could talk to Mr. Fuller. So yesterday, I did that and we have come to somewhat of a conclusion that he will work his best to alleviate what I'm concerned about, and that's traffic going through my parking lot to exit the car wash. So with that in mind, I think we've done what we can do and we'll see what happens. He's going to make some adjustments to his drawing to see that there is as little a possible left turn out of the car wash. So with that, I have no further comments except that it was a little late in the game and I got notified, so... With that, thank you.
Then we thank you for coming forward. The next person up is Steve Hollis.
Just got a few things and I'll keep it within five minutes. First thing, I was gonna leave the Fuller Brush Car Wash until the end, but as long as another person brought it up, I will bring it up now. I've been following it extensively through its processes and I believe that you've all done your part trying to get a business in, make it the most progressive place we can have, make it easy on the citizens to come in and out, use the facility, and I was kind of upset or saddened by the fact that I dot through a curb in the works and came back and said, "Oh, no, you've got to have no left turn on Algonquin," which to me is not fair. There's other different structures and businesses along the Algonquin Road that are closer to intersections that don't have any restrictions on left turn whatsoever. So for whatever, I don't think I dotted the justice to Rolling Meadows to give the business an adequate time to show that they can make it work and make it easy for them to work. So that's the first thing, and I strongly recommend that in future, if any of these instances come up where Rolling Meadows has to say, "This is the best thing we want," that that word should come down and go to IDOT, so IDOT doesn't walk into this situation again and say, "We're changing it again." With that in mind, the other thing I've got is, there's an on-the-ordinance tonight with property at 4405 Sycamore. Not quite sure why we're involved in that. If the property's been out there for five to six years, why are we doing anything with it? It's, why didn't this other real estate agent or the person that's flipping it, the Ganci LLC, why didn't they just buy it on their own? Why did we get involved? It sounds very strange that we went after one piece of property and said, "We're gonna get involved, we're gonna do this, and yet, we're gonna turn it over to you and you can restore it." Makes no sense. So I, I think in the future, again, if somebody comes out and pays taxes on it, it's their responsibility to do whatever it takes to make it work. Rolling Meadows should not get in the middle of it. On another note, the bike path that's coming up, I think it's been approved already, and there's like $1.6 million, of which we're gonna pay $250,000 to build this piece of property. Not quite sure if that's really a legitimate thing, but I understand that that's part of a bigger project, so we're gonna have to do it. That's fine. I guess the only question I have is, who's maintaining the bike paths that are in place today? Anybody know that? What is the cost of that, that we're having to spend on that? It's great to put it in, but who does the long-term care? So I don't know the answer to that, and I'm sure you can all discuss it. There was also a factor that has been approved for a new generator at Public Works. I don't, I'm not opposed to putting it in, I just don't know why we need a generator for the whole building. If the whole purpose is to back up the emergency areas, put a generator in for that. It's been a done deal, it's already in place and going in the future, even though it's been not there for 20 years, all of a sudden, we need one and we have to spend, you know, $275,000 to put a generator in? We've been doing it with, without, for now, so anyway, that's the other thing. So I guess that's all I've really got up to this point. I guess the only major thing I've got that is on the agenda tonight is the 440 Sycamore. We should not be involved in that. Thank you.
And thank you for taking the time to come up to address the council. The next person in to sign in is Chris Farrelly.
Pilarillo.
Pilarillo, thank you.
Close enough.
Hi. This is regarding the car wash. I understand, by living in the Elizabeth Place Townhouse Association, there's 182 units that are snuck back in there, and trust me when I say, you know, Ritzy's is, is not exactly the most attractive corner in the, in the town. So looking for some industry, something to come in, absolutely is, it makes sense for all of us. Unfortunately, I disagree with the gentleman who just spoke because, living there, when you try to exit from Meadowbrook onto Algonquin at 8:00 in the morning or at 5:00 at night, it is a hazard. It is very difficult. You have to have guts to leave our, our, our place. If you haven't been there and you haven't driven through that and tried to do that, I suggest you do that. Just go and experience what it's like to leave during those times because you're gonna find that IDOT made a very good decision for the safety of the citizens not to make a left-hand turn out of there. So I really do appreciate that adjustment. I always support businesses and being able to be a contribution. I wish that, and I have to acknowledge that I am late to the game, I'm late to finding out if there was any encouragement of any other industry to, to, to work on that property, if there are any incentives or anything. So I'm disappointed that we have now a fifth car wash coming in within two miles of my house. I don't know if you'd want five car washes two miles from your house, so I think that is a consideration that wasn't really regarded. I know that we want to kill the, the dead zone, the unattractive dead zone, but another car wash doesn't really raise the game of quality of industry to Rolling Meadows, so I'm a bit disappointed in that. And the lack of notification. I know that there was a breakdown in how that happened. It didn't really support advocacy for any of the parties that may want to, they wanted to step up and intervene with that. Obviously, I'm the only one here for my association, so we clearly failed at doing what we needed to do. But if you could, the, the thing that I really want to emphasize is safety. I don't see a lot of patrolling and stopping and speeding on Algonquin during that time. People are flying down there at 45 miles an hour, trying to get to work. If you could then encourage some policing of the speeding, that could make the place more safe. That could certainly accommodate quite a bit, and that would be the one request that I, I put out there. I don't know if that's something doable, but that would make a difference. And that's what I have to say. Thanks.
And thank you for coming forward this evening. Seeing no more signatories, we now move on to resolutions. Resolution A, number 17-R-133, accept the 2018 library budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Baner, there's no surprise there that you, our liaison, would approve it. Do we have a second? We have a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Six in favor and zero opposed. The resolution is adopted. Resolution B, number 17-R-134, is to adopt the 2018 city budget. If this resolution had adopted, would it, would adopt the 2018 city budget? Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diestis has made it and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Six in favor and one opposed. The resolution does pass. We now go on to ordinances in for a second reading. Ordinance C would approve the tax levy for the library. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the tax levy for the library. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Budmats has made that and it has been seconded by Mr. Baner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. That ordinance has passed. Ordinance D, this ordinance, if adopted, would approve the tax levy for the city. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made it and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance E, approve acquiring the property located at 4405 Sycamore. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve acquiring the property located at that location. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diestis has made that motion. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the fact that a gentleman from my ward asked some questions, I was wondering if we could just have a short public discussion as to why, why we purchased this property. I understand that it's been empty for a long time, but why we needed to purchase this, why couldn't it go directly to another party? I, I don't know the answer to that, so I was hoping someone could just give us some general information so we answer some of his questions.
Mr. McCall.
I'd be happy to answer that. First of all, this, this property at 4405 Sycamore has been vacant since February of the year 2010. Neighbors have been complaining and rightfully so. The law hasn't been getting cut, other than the city doing it. The city then went through two, it went through a foreclosure. The owners went through two bankruptcies. They went through a second foreclosure. The foreclosure was, was abandoned. It was hopeful that the lender and the foreclosure would take possession of the property. That wasn't going to happen. The city then stepped in. The city then filed a lawsuit. The city then was able to obtain title to the property, to turn around and sell it with the idea of being that someone would come in and do the purchase, do the rehab and restore it to a single-family home with people actually residing in it for the benefit of the whole entire neighborhood. And as by virtue of the city selling the property, the city is, the city is recouping the expenses and attorney's fees that it's expended to do so. Alternatively, we could just leave it sit there and be vacant and have it rodent infested and people going in and out and could have done all that, but we didn't do that.
I think, and I understand what you're saying, and I, I understood that before also. I think the concern is that maybe in the future, is, is there another way to resolve these issues? I understand it was very difficult because I, why would we even pay someone if they wouldn't, the foreclosure company wouldn't take possession of it? Why, why do we have to pay them anything?
We're not, we're not paying them anything. They're paying us.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the guys who are taking over now, the guys who gave it up. You said we purchased it, so I assume we paid someone some money for the property.
No, we acquired it.
So we didn't pay any money for it?
Correct.
Great. Thank you for the explanation.
We paid nothing to acquire it, other than the costs and attorney's fees.
Wonderful.
And we are getting and recouping those costs and fees to acquire the property, to flip it to somebody who will turn it into a single-family home that complies with the city's building code and hopefully put a family in there that will enjoy it.
Great. I'm sure the whole world over there is very happy that it's being done. Thank you for the explanation.
You're quite welcome.
But the bottom line, Mr. McCall, zero cost to the city. Correct.
At the end of the day, all the fees and costs, for the most part, will be paid by the city. And I think there are some administrative expenses that are hard to gauge, put a number on, but that's the number.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Any other discussion? Mr. Diestis.
Thank you. As this is in my ward, I want to let everyone know that the neighbors who live on Sycamore, on Hawthorne, on Brookmead over there, have all been having conversations with me for the last seven years of what we can do, so I'm glad to let them know now that the city did acquire the property after the attorney's explanation and we have sold it, so we've recouped all of our cost and we're gonna put somebody in, we're giving it to, selling it to a contractor who's gonna make it family-ready and not, not a family of raccoons, because they've been living there for years and, and creating problems for all the neighbors. So it's gonna be a, a human, habitable house again. So somebody's gonna get a new home soon, so I want to thank the city and I'm sure all the neighbors who live all around there are thanking you right now.
Thank you, Mr. Diestis. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diestis.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
The seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This now moves us to the consent ordinances. It consists of three items, F through H. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider all three ordinances. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diestis has made it. It has been seconded by Mr. Veenbosch without debate. Ordinance F is to grant final approval of a single use for the, for the redevelopment of property located at 2765 Algonquin Road for Fuller's Car Wash. On August 8th, 2017, it was brought to the staff's attention that the notification procedure was not completed correctly and adjacent property owners were not notified of the original public hearing. After meeting with the neighboring owner, the city attorney recommended rehearing the petition and ensuring that the proper notification was performed. At its meeting held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 with two absent to approve the rehearing on this, on the special use. Ordinance G is to grant variance to size, number, and location of parking spaces at 3405 Algonquin Road. The petitioner, the petitioner has appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council previously for a text amendment to allow assisted living establishments as a special use in T1 District, a special use for an assisted living establishment, and a signed appeal for the property at 3405 3477 Algonquin Road. The petitioner is now seeking specific approval for the parking plan associated with the development so that they move forward with the lender and the permitting process. At its meeting held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 with two absent to approve the proposed variance for the number, size, and location of parking spaces. H, grant preliminary approval of a seven-lot subdivision for property known as 161620 Vermont Street in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The property at 161620 Vermont Street is being proposed to be subdivided and redeveloped from two lots totaling 2.25 acres into seven single homes. The lots will range in size from 10,000 square feet. The minimum required lot size is in an R1 district to 15,011 square feet. At its meeting held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 with two absent to give preliminary approval of the proposed seven-lot subdivision. The question is, shall all three ordinances be moved for a second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbosch.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, it will move forward to a second reading. This brings the council to new business. The next item of business is a motion to approve the warrants from the 11/28/17 as presented by the Finance Department. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Mr. Veenbosch has made it and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Veenbosch has made it, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none is. The question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Seven approved and none opposed. The warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent resolution that consists of two items, J and K. Does any alderman wish to remove either item from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon?
K.
So we no longer have a consent agenda, which brings us to Resolution J, number 17-R-135, award a contract for electrical improvement at pumping stations. Do I have a motion to approve that? Mr. Veenbosch has made it. It has been seconded. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the award of a contract at Patrick Electrical Service for the installation of the electrical services, meters, and equipment for the three water system pressures, pressure stations located at 1701 Rolling Road, 4205 West Frontage Road, and 3910 Kirchhoff Road. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With seven approved and none opposed, that moves forward. Resolution 17-R-136 is the order, is the authorized application for an ITEP grant. Do I have a motion? Mr. Baner has made it and has been seconded. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the submission of a grant application to ITEP for the proposed construction of a bike path on the west side of Hicks Road from Kirchhoff Road to E. Beulock Avenue, and on Euclid Avenue from Hicks Road to Countryside Park Attendants. Mr. Cannon, you have first bite at the apple, as they say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I am not opposed to bike paths. I'm not opposed to growth in the city. The concern I have is strictly a dollar thing. You know, we're going to spend another $250,000 on a bike path that some people use. My point being is that, and probably in the last month and a half, I've probably had five or six constituents in my ward that have contacted me for a number of variety of issues. Every one of them, to the person, has complained about roads in our town. And we seem to keep on spending money over and above our normal budget items for future items. Like last week, we, it looks like we're going on a path of approving of a generator that we haven't had in our budget in the past, and now we're going to spend upwards of $200,000 to $300,000 on that. Now we're going to spend $250,000 on another bike path that we don't. Do we need it? I don't know if we need it. There's a lot of people that ride bikes, but there's a lot of people that don't ride bikes. I think everybody, whether they drive or not, uses roads. I would like to see anything we can do to focus our attentions on roads, not on bike paths or other issues. And for that reason, I won't be supporting this. I would ask people to rethink about what they're doing when they approve this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any other discussion? Comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
No.
Veenbosch.
No.
Cannon.
No.
Bud Matts.
No.
Four to three, it fails. This brings us to a mayoral appointments. I have none. I do have a proclamation for support of the Illinois Bicentennial Celebration. Whereas on August 26, 2018, will mark the 200th anniversary of the adoption of the Illinois Constitution of 1818 at the Kaskaskiak Convention, and whereas December 3, 2018, will mark the 200th anniversary of the admission of Illinois to the Union as a state officially the 21st state in the Union. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Rolling Meadows, by the City Council of the City of Rolling Meadows, Cook County. Illinois endorses the efforts of Illinois Bicentennial Commission in promoting, planning, and executing historical, educational, celebratory, and cultural initiatives, and further resolves to recognize and celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Illinois. Does the clerk have a report?
Just a final reminder, the meetings in December have been moved up, so there will be a council meeting next week, December 5, and then the 12th, and then the 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Crumstock, community items of interest?
Sure. We actually have a few add-ons, and one thing that, obviously with the cameras, if they can focus onto the podium, what we actually put out is the Bicentennial Illinois flag that's out there. This is something that we will put somewhere in the city. Can't guarantee where it will be exactly, but we'll work with Public Works to put it somewhere. But that's the flag that they have for 200 years of being the state of Illinois, 21st into the Union. Obviously, the first item for topics to mention is that yard waste collection ends Friday, December 1. As you can see, a lot of leaves have been falling with the beautiful weather. 60 degrees today was pretty impressive. But again, on Friday, December 1, we do finish up with yard waste collection. Obviously, what the mayor mentioned earlier in the night, the city will be conducting its annual tree lighting event on Thursday, December 7. It starts promptly at 6:00 p.m. Santa will make his appearance, and according to the forecast, there's a potential that there will be some precipitation coming, so hopefully he'll be on time that day. But we are at the tree outside of 31Corty Kirchhoff Road, the McDonald's, and fireworks will follow the tree lighting, and then we hope that everybody joins the city for the spaghetti dinner that was actually mentioned, provided by the Stadium Club here in Rolling Meadows. And it's, the spaghetti dinner is for while supplies last. It is at the fire station. The dinner starts promptly, we say 6:30, but if you're trickling in a little early, we will be ready for that. And again, as we've done in the past, Santa's elves and reindeers will be at the fire station to, please come and enjoy the event. Obviously, Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sezak will have additional information because we actually found out one more piece that's going to be joining that night, later that night. And then, obviously, going on for the City of Rolling Meadows, when you walked into City Hall, you see that we're still partnered with the United States Marine Corps Reserves to collect Toys for Tots. And our program still goes until Friday, December 8. We do appreciate everybody who's contributed up to this point in time. We've already filled the boxes that they've provided to us, and now we're flowing into our own boxes. But that's a greatly appreciated. And again, this program does go until Friday, December 8. It is our partnership with the United States Marine Corps Reserve for the Toys for Tots. On Saturday, December 9, at the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be doing their food drive at the Jewel Osco Food at 3,000 Kirchhoff Road. It actually goes from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I guess I can make a community announcement, too, that also on Saturday, December 9, Comets Frozen Custard will actually be open just for that day for pints and additional amount. Obviously, as people know, on November 22, they actually close for the season. They would hope to open up sometime in the spring, March-ish, hopefully, but we will see what happens. But they will be open that one day for additional holiday purchases. The next city blood drive will be conducted on Tuesday, December 19, at City Hall, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Obviously, as people know, outside of City Hall, the City Swank and Eldon Recycling are conducting the holiday light, extension cord, and wire recycling program again. Collection boxes, as I said, are here at City Hall. We have two of them on the west side. And again, that program actually goes until February 16, 2018. The other items that I do want to add before I go to the second page of this is that Rotary of Rolling Meadows will be doing the Red Kettle at Jewel Osco this Friday, December 1, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The Rotarian over there, if you want additional information about that, would be more than happy to tell you. But again, that will be at the Jewel Osco this Friday, December 1. Rotary will be doing the Red Kettle. The other item that is not on the list, before I go back to the list, is that Community Church of Rolling Meadows will be doing Charles Dickens' Christmas Carol, and that will be Saturday, December 2. Dinner is at 6:00 p.m., play is at 7:30. There is a charge for that. We do have flyers here in City Hall, or you can also contact Community Church of Rolling Meadows, and they will tell you about each one of those. Going back to the regular sheets that are in front of you, as I mentioned before, with all the leaves actually dropping, we, please, we remind residents, businesses, please do not dump or blow those leaves into the street or down the sewers. We do have two street sweepers, one in the City of Rolling Meadows, one is our contractor who works throughout the community, making sure that we have drains that are going correctly and leaves are not blown all over the place. Obviously, because it's the last meeting of the month, we have future December committee meetings. A little bit different from what you're used to seeing is that we actually have one Economic Development Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 5, at 6:00 p.m. Tentative items to discuss are new business feedback and contact distribution, the business advocate highlight, continued restaurant incentive discussion, items of interest. And then we've actually added in a 7B request for 2550 Golf Road, that we will be having that discussion before it comes to the City Council. Now, a little bit different from what you see in the past is that the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting toys in December. Tuesday, December 5, at 7:30, they will be meeting with their regular meeting, and that's actually going to be 7:30, but they will be in the EOC because City Council will be here in the council chambers. And they have five public hearings are tentatively scheduled, consisting of, one, preliminary approval for the two-lot subdivision of property located at 2600 Benton Street, Palatine, Illinois. It is in our R1 residential. Karen Stragmalia is the, from Four Star Incorporated, is the petitioner. There's also primary approval for a two-lot subdivision of property located at 4190 and 4200 Euclid Avenue. That's in Rolling Meadows M1 Manufacturing District. Patrick Dresskol from Midwest Euclid Properties is the petitioner. There's also going to be a text amendment to Section 122-10 of the City of Rolling Meadows Code to add little free libraries as an accessory structure in the front yard. City of Rolling Meadows is actually the petitioner for that one. And then there will be a text amendment from the City of Rolling Meadows zoning code to require all petitioners for public hearings to post notification signs 15 to 30 days prior to the assigned meeting date. And the City of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner on that one. And then the final item for that night is a text amendment for the City of Rolling Meadows zoning code regarding new antenna structures in various zoning codes, and then zoning districts in our code. And then, again, the City of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner on that. Now, a little bit different is there will be a second meeting, and this will be a special Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to be held on Wednesday, December 20, at 7:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. There will be three public hearings are tentatively scheduled for that night, and it consists of, one, the preliminary approval for a three-lot subdivision for property located at 28192915 Kirchhoff Road. That is in our commercial area. Andrew Mao of Ryan Homes Incorporated is the petitioner. The second one for that night also deals with that property. Amendment to the City of Rolling Meadows Comprehensive Plan and Res zoning Request from the C2 Commercial District to an R4 General Residential for the southern, approximately nine acres of the property located at 28192915 Kirchhoff Road. Again, Andrew Mao from Ryan Homes Incorporated is the petitioner. And then the final one for that special meeting, and again, on December 20, will be the preliminary approval of the planned development for the property located at 28192915 Kirchhoff Road. And again, C2 Commercial, Andrew Mao from Ryan Homes is the petitioner. With that, that is items of interest for this month.
So, Mr. Crumstock, new businesses?
Thank you again. Obviously, you have before you eight new businesses that came in in October. Would I would actually mention two of them? One of them, I just like saying their name. It's the Fairy Godmother Home Organizing. That got me even when we were at Economic Development Committee. It is a home occupation, home organizing services. And the second one that I do want to highlight out of the eight is Village Bank and Trust at 1635 El Gunquin Road. We do welcome them to the community. They are a win trust bank. With that, those are the new businesses for October.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Chief, time to keep the wreath red. Campaign?
So I want the Rolling Meadows Fire Department to remind you to keep your holidays safe and happy. The fire department annually teams up with other fire departments from across the country in a Keep the Wreath Red program. This year, the program will run in Rolling Meadows from November 30 through New Year's Day, Thursday, January 1. Keep the Wreath Red is a holiday fire safety program designed to increase fire safety awareness, and our fire department will place an illuminated wreath with red bulbs in front of both fire stations. In the event that a fire occurs and it origins from a Christmas decoration, we will change the one red light to white, and the goal is to keep the bulbs red in the wreath. So we offer the following tips to keep the wreath red. Check all your illuminated decorations to make sure they are in good condition. Light strands that are frayed or damaged with wires should be replaced with newer UL-listed labeled lights. Outside cords should be approved for exterior use, and inside cords should not be placed under carpets or throw rugs. Keep live Christmas trees watered frequently. Be aware that your tree's life, and when it becomes brittle, discontinue using lights. Always turn off the lights when leaving the home. And your fire department discourages the use of traditional open flame candles. However, if you choose to use them, assure that they are safe, steady, and secure so that they won't burn down and will not set anything nearby aflame. So as always, check your smoke detector and make sure they are in good working conditions. If you did not change the batteries when you did change your clocks in October, change them now. The fire department is available to assist you with that task. And for these and other safeties, go to the city's website, hover over Government, and at the top of the page, go to Departments, and click down on the Fire Department. And so your fire department wishes you all a fire safe, happy, and holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Staff Traffic Advisory Report. Mr. Pope, just stimulate us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do my best. The Traffic Review Committee met most recently on November 8. Four things to highlight for council's information. First was some discussion we had on the Vermont-Euclid crosswalk signage and resident concern about safety there. We had looked at some of that with regards to the proposed Hicks-Euclid bike path project, should that have been pursued, but without that, we'll have to go back to discussions with Cook County Highway Department and see if we can do it without. Part of that bike path was to deal with pedestrian signals there as a main element of that. So we'll continue to work with the county highway department to see what we can come up with in terms of safety at that particular location. Dupont Plumtree intersection 90-degree curve, earlier this year, we put in yellow centerline striping. One of the residents nearby asked if their idea was that we put white striping on the curb line. We'll send that to Public Works. I'm not sure at this point whether it's been done, but it'll be done soon, if not already done. Item 3, East Frontage Road parking issues, was previously discussed. Just for your information, Public Works is working on changing out and adding considerable amount of signage to better clarify the areas where there's no parking permitted, speed limit signage and the like, per existing regulations on that street. And then lastly, we're still investigating a safety concern reported to us regarding at Plum Grove Junior High School with regards to students that are crossing Plum Grove Road at Brockway Street, and I expect we will discuss that matter as well as these others as needed at the December meeting, which is scheduled for December 6 at 2:30 p.m. So that's a report for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Of course. I guess we would say this is the best for last, Ms. Sezak, because it's the downtown holiday celebration?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Crumstock has mentioned, on Thursday, December 7, Rolling Meadows, let me start again, Rolling Meadows residents will be able to ring in the holidays with two downtown events in one evening. At 6:00 p.m. in front of the McDonald's on Kirchhoff Road, be a part of the downtown countdown to light up the holiday tree. The event will feature city officials, local music groups, goodies giveaways, and a special appearance by Santa Claus. Immediately after, from 6:30 to 8:30, you are invited to walk over to enjoy a complimentary spaghetti dinner at the fire station on Meadow Drive while supplies last. Say hi to your favorite firemen and look for Santa's elves and live reindeer on your way in. We hope to see you there. We hope to see you there. I did receive a last-minute call today, and Trinity Lutheran Church will be conducting a radio play as they did last year. We're just not quite sure of the time yet. So check the city's Facebook page and I'm assuming Trinity's, yeah, Trinity's website as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sezak. Are there matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, in light of the nice weather we've been having, if the city should consider extending the leaf pickup for another week or two. I know on my own block, there's still a couple trees that are still green, literally. I know in the past, we've done it for one or two weeks. I can't believe the dump is closed already, and I know there's a little bit of cost involved, but how is it a couple other suburbs today where there's tons of leaves all around? So I don't know if it's possible, just as, I'm just offering up as a suggestion, we try to do that.
We're trying to, let's to field that.
I think, Brad, we were trying to talk.
The state regulations are December 1 in terms of the landfills, but the landfills do stay open. We don't have any control over that. Given the good weather, if we don't get snowfalls, we may be able to continue that. It's not something we necessarily want to promote because as soon as we promote it, we'll have a snowfall or the landfills will close. But we have, in years past, when the weather is good, allowed for collection of leaves and yard waste and the like in the week following. We just do that as long as we can and as long as the landfills are open. But once they're closed and we have no place to put it, then we have to stop, and at that point, we would notify and tag residents to take their materials in until spring.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other items on the agenda? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.